Sweet rise to the presentation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Secretary General Chris Dennis is absent all others present.
And both correspondent report Amy. Oh, right, there's been some wonderful things going on. One of the first things is Dean County ruled that elements of the 2011 Act 10 are unconstitutional. Judge Jacob Frost decided earlier in the year that some parts were unconstitutional because as it was relating, municipal police officers were allowed certain things, but other law enforcement like game wardens weren't allowed to do things. So that's why he ruled the whole thing unconstitutional. Then he went back recently and said that the 2011 law barred general employees from negotiating for anything other than base wage increases that were capped by the Consumer Price Index. He also struck down the measure that required 51% of all members in a bargaining unit to certify the union, while allowing a simple majority for those who certified in other public safety definitions, and also allowing union dues to be deducted from public safety employees, but not for any others. So those things were struck down in his ruling. We don't know how that's going to impact anyone else yet, and WASB is looking at it and will keep us all informed on it. The Supreme Court is agreeing to hear a case challenging the constitutionality of the E-Rate program. And the E-Rate program is what funds school districts for internet broadband and some subsidies with their net. So they've allowed to hear that the Universal Service Fund is primarily funded through an additional fee or a tax on consumers' phone bills, and that's where the rub is. People are saying that that's not constitutional. So the U.S. Supreme Court has agreed to hear that. The state assembly leadership has been determined, and Robin Voss was elected Speaker of the Assembly, and Representative Greta Neubauer was also reelected as the minority leader. Let's see, DPI approved the reading curriculum, but they bypassed the legislative approval after the Supreme Court said they issued a ruling. So they came up with a reading program that people could get and use. And now Joint Finance Committee still hasn't released any of that money, as we know, because we had to fund a little bit of it last week, or last month, as Amber had said. Some of the recommended early literacy curricula are Bookworms, the Core Knowledge Language Arts, the EL Education, HMH Reading with Amira, and Wit and Wisdom with G.O.D. Now, the Budget Committee chair's pushed back and said, "It doesn't matter what the Supreme Court said. You still had to run it by us, even though we're not going to give you the money yet." So those two are kind of fussing with each other to figure out what's going on. Either way, we still don't have the money, and we still just have to fund it and suck it up ourselves. The new legislature will have eight members with school board experience. Representative Joel Kitchens is one that has returned, so that's great. But that's the first time that they've had so many people that have had school board experience that are now in the legislature. And that is it.
Yeah, hopefully that will give them a little bit more understanding.
Oh, yeah, how schools and school boards need this support. So, yes.
Yeah. Any questions or comments?
All right, hearing none, we'll keep moving. Court Caesar, you go.
Jesse, you were probably there last week, got to see the new parking lot, new facilities. So they are all ready to show off their new cosmetic improvements. CISA 7 is the lead and fiscal agent of the Assessment Professional Learning and Coaching Series. So what they are doing is providing learning about creating equitable and meaningful classroom assessments. So they are the leader for all 12 Cisas. This is a $23,000 program that's free because of the grant writing. I didn't see our name in it. We have four districts in our CISA and 10 from last year that have participated. So it's something that we could look into, classroom end-of-unit assessment and data analytics, performance-based assessments, formative assessments, and educator-created interim assessments. So all sorts of exciting stuff coming out of that program. One of the cool things that we did during the meeting was we received the training of Seven Steps of Successful Boardmanship. And then next year, we are doing the Five Voices of Leadership. So CISA always incorporates a module into our board meetings of training and development and learning. So they asked us as a board to reflect, "What are you adding into your meetings to learn something new?" So they, you know, ask ourselves some questions. What could we focus on to learn every month? How could we see things that we've implemented? They suggested school visits. There's districts much larger than ours with multiple schools that make sure that the board is visiting every school every year. Did you implement something new? Do a classroom visit, make a purchase, go and see it? So that's kind of stuff for us to think about as a board, what do we want to do within our schools? Then they also asked us to start thinking about our youth apprentice. The YA program is super successful in Northeast Wisconsin because of our schools and our employers. How and where and when do we recognize our youth apprentice students? Make sure we're not lagging behind on like doing something cool to show the workforce. There is a golf outing coming up in June, which there'll be more on to benefit that program. And then we had presentations from AESA and WASBA to select Colleen's replacement, and we are going with WASBA to support the director search.
Questions for Chrissy. All right, hearing none. Moving on to Sophia.
I apologize for my absence last meeting. I was not feeling very well. Going into sports, boys' basketball is on right now, in about half hour. JV1 and JV2 will play in front of Kali, as varsity will not play today. Varsity and both JVs will play at Tavastapool on Thursday, 5:45 and 7:00 p.m. And then as well as girls, they play tomorrow at Southern Door, 5:30 and 7:00 p.m. As well as Friday at home against Sturgeon Bay, again, 5:30 and 7:00 p.m. Going to clubs, bowling, varsity has a match on Tuesday at Kiwanee at 4:30, as well as JV on Thursday at Kiwanee, 4:30. And then Saturday, both the JV and varsity will be at Apple Valley Lanes in Sturgeon Bay at 10:30 and 12:30 p.m. for the JVs. Ski trip, unfortunately, their fruit sale has ended, I believe, ended, I want to say, middle of November, I believe, and they just started like handing out their fruit. The aluminum cans project for the period project, they brought in 263 pounds of cans, and they got $78 total, and they're still collecting more. Shifting gears to Student Council, we're doing a food drive. So we started that, I think, last week or the previous week. And we're collecting like canned foods and like hygiene products for the less fortunate and like the food pantry. So we will be taking donations until the 18th, roughly noon-ish, and then we will go give them to the local food pantry. Again, we will be doing a senior bingo February. We don't have a set date or time, but it will be Saturday, one of the Saturdays in February. We will have prizes, and I have been told it's well-attended, so I will make sure to be there. The Season Forgiving, the National Honor Society, and the Balance Intermittent Program are like teaming up to collect gifts for, again, like the less fortunate and like children who don't get really like a lot of gifts, because maybe their parents can't afford it. They will be collecting gifts until the 18th, and from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. they will be like doing like the season of giving, where I believe there's like face paint, maybe. I'm not too sure on it, but that will be going on from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the cafeteria on Wednesday.
There will be cookie decorating.
Yes.
So the food can be brought here to the school. What about the things for the National Honor Society?
I believe that can also be brought to the school, yes.
Okay. All right, a couple more days that people can bring donations. Is that it?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, no misconceptions. Did anybody submit a challenge? As far as board president announcements, I would like to appoint an ad hoc committee, basically to study the feasibility of the school district's involvement in the property adjacent to the elementary school. Jeremy and Juanie and Chrissy, and then Amber would like you to be on that, as well as Jesse. And Jeremy, would you be willing to chair it?
Yes.
So you guys can figure out a meeting date a little bit later, probably try and get something started in January. And other than that, can't believe it's almost Christmas. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Moving on, administration reports.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to cover a little bit about some referendum projects and updates. We have Bayland Buildings here to give updates to the board on proposals. We have to go over our monthly finances from Amber. We'll talk about our '25-'26 school calendar. It's hard to believe that we're at that point already, but we can add the next year. And then just a quick reminder about the spring election for school board. To start, I just want to do a brief overview of what construction projects are all included in the referendum. I know it was a while ago since we had our community sessions, and there may be some new people watching out in the community this recording, but we were looking at relocating the band and choir rooms from the interior of this middle school and high school to where the current tech ed spaces are. That would push tech ed spaces down further. We'd also create a separate ag space that would be replacing where currently the Algoma Venture Academy, or ABA, is placed. They would be moved into where the existing band and choir rooms are, then in the center of the building. So shifting those three areas around a little bit. We would create a conference room in the little theater here at the middle school and high school. We would do a remodel of all of the restrooms in this building. We would be replacing all of the windows and select doors at both of the buildings. We will be redoing the parking lot replacement here at the middle school and high school, or sections of the parking lot. There are some newer sections that do not need to be replaced at this point. We'll be resurfacing the track here at the middle school and high school in the back. Putting a rubberized surface on the playground equipment at the elementary school, the main equipment area. Looking at adding the storage for PE classes at the elementary school, taking a portion of the boys' locker room to include some storage. We would do some energy efficiency upgrades at both buildings that would include some plumbing, electrical work. That work is all being done through McKinn Street. Replacing the cast iron pipes at the elementary school. Doing a good section or replacement of the roof at the elementary school. For safety and security upgrades, we would be doing a new secure entrance at the middle school and high school. Purchasing a visitor identification system for both of our buildings that would do a quick background check for any visitors that are coming into our buildings. Purchase some additional cameras that would be installed throughout the building, including one at the front entrances, so visitors will need to be buzzed into the main office then with those. And then we also will be doing some new door hardware, rekeying the doors for interior and exterior doors. And then lastly, we would be doing some updates to the Performing Arts Center that would include new lighting and sound systems and installing new ceiling tiles. There's a lot on that list, isn't there?
Yeah.
So I'm going to turn it over to Jim and Chris from Bayland Buildings, and they're going to speak a little bit about the work that they've been doing, so.
So with the design-build process, which we presented to you guys, basically started out with talking to staff, getting the needs and the wants for the projects that Jesse just mentioned. Once we got that input, we, you know, we created a community advisory committee, which went through like over 25 projects, and then narrowed it down to ones that were really needs, wants, or the communities would support based off the survey results that came in. Then we brought that information back into the board at that time to discuss the projects that were, we felt would be approved to move forward with, which we did receive that. And then Chris is our architect. He prepared the drawings that the board is looking at, and we sent that out for the bid process. So they were sent out to local Baylands, local contractors. They were also on the Builders Exchange and online. So as Jessica can attest to, there was companies from the United States, Iowa, Chicago, Illinois, New York, that were calling in, asking questions. So again, there's a lot of, you know, it was definitely out there. We also put it in the paper to let everybody know that this is going on and try to obtain as many local bids as possible. And you can't make people bid, but just informing them that it's there. So that process has went through and completed, and within budget is where the items that were discussed came in. So we're very happy to inform the board of that, that all the projects that were of major need are able to be obtained with cost and inflation and everything, we're able to still maintain budget.
So the drawings that you have in front of you are basically, we broke the entire scope of work into two scopes, one for the middle and high school and one for the elementary school. Basically, you'll see there's a site plan, demolition plans, floor plans, finish plans, door schedule, window schedule. Basically, we started with the initial referendum drawings that were very schematic and added a lot of detail to really inform our subcontractors and other bidders what the scope of work is and what the expectations are for the design. You'll also note on the drawings that there are several alternates, which are basically design options that the district can choose what to include of those. Those are all indicated with a heavy dashed line around that area of scope, and then they're numbered as well.
As far as the project timeline goes, if once approved by the board, at that time, we would then move forward with doing all state, local plans needed to get approvals for them, start awarding contracts or subcontracts, getting all any long lead time materials ordered, getting phasing schedules and everything in place. The intent is to have everything ready to go, so as soon as school is out, so there's no disruption. I mean, before school's out, we start mobilizing things and having things in place. But the day school is let loose, for the summer, we would go in and attack all projects to complete them during the summer months with the intention of having substantial completion right as school is coming back in fall.
Fall of 2025?
Correct, yeah, 2025, yep. So starting, yeah, 2025, the summer. Some projects, again, we don't want to interrupt school, probably the project, the roof projects, for instance, over at the elementary school. We can stay then in an area where we can tackle some of those projects before school is let out, just to help everything move along. Again, there's a lot of work in between both schools. So again, to come up with that, we will have a very good plan in place. And again, so getting approval to get contracts and permits and everything in place really, really helps us out. Bayland will also have a project manager, which will take care of all the meeting minute notes, photos, any documentation. And then there would be an onsite, full-time onsite supervisor, which will be, you know, running both projects, looking at quality control, safety, of course, you know, and as things go on, you know, they're making, we'll definitely have input from the board, or Jesse, or whoever they put as the main point of contact. Again, to attend our construction meetings in case something is maybe brought up, or needs or wants, or while you have that open, or, you know, any issues, and whatever will be, there'll be onsite supervisor that will be here daily to take care of, addressing any questions, comments, concerns, and making sure we get done. We say we're going to get done.
So the next step is all the permits and things like that.
Fun stuff.
Yeah, I have a question. So if you're going to start the construction during the summer, it's then going to be imperative that the staff removes everything? Are we going to pack everything up and put it somewhere so that construction demo can get in? Where is that going to be held?
Yeah, we haven't talked about that yet. Those will be upcoming in meetings that we'll be having in probably winter here, January, February, I would say.
Are you guys going to work in phases? You know, like Phase 1 would be the band room, and then Phase 2 would be charter school? Or are you just going to attack it all and go?
No, I mean, there'll be something going on in all of the spaces, just because there's so much to do. But the intent is to really hone in on one specific area, because like for the shop, or the wood shop, everything gets moved way up over there, there's a lot of electric, compressors, something that has to happen. Where the little theater is that will get infilled.
Right.
So there's a lot of work. So again, those are two areas that we need to really hone in on first. And then once those are completed, things will get shuffled around. Like in the band room, there's all those big cabinets. So again, we'll be taking those out, we'll have to find a temporary home, you know, in the hallway or whatever, you know. And then they'll be reused. Anything that's not going to be reused, of course, will be, you know, gone on an issue we guess. There will be a phased plan, but there's going to be, all scopes will be happening at all times, just some harder than others.
How's this impact summer school and musical?
We are well aware of that, and we'll work on that out, I'm sure, as an admin team with the staff, but we will make it work.
It's still going to happen.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It'll be construction, it'll be Bob the Builder.
Yes. If you put those kids to work, we'll get something like.
Were these bids that were sent out, is this as a whole bid, or were they separated out where, you know, the tech ed was one bid, and the music room was another bid, and how did that all work?
Yep, so to keep it simplified, as well as get the best bid results, that's why you have two different plans, keep high school, high school, but elementary, you know, just you're not going through 80 pages of plans and, you know, half or half. But we did want, we did send them out as one lump sum, because we get by far the best pricing at that point. And not to mention, we don't want to have two bid packages. We have one electrician, say, at the high school, and another one at the elementary school, you know, for scheduling purposes. So the plans were specifically broke out to keep them separate, at least the scope there. But the bids were combined as a lump sum, which we, through the design-build process, we know gets the best prices as a lump sum. So the areas of each area were not technically broke out, they're all lump summed. Like I said, we could get breakouts if needed to be. But again, in order to get the best pricing, lump sum is the way to go. So that's how we have it right now.
So you said you had a pretty good response in terms of.
Yeah.
Good. All right.
All right, we jump to a little bit of financial update for around the referendum. Amber's going to speak about that, so.
So the question on everybody's mind is probably, can we afford this?
Yeah.
We are, we absolutely are. The proposals received to date from both Bayland and McKinn Street are all within the expected budgets that were created during the initial study. So I can't tell you how much extra will be. That, when we get closer to the end, we'll be able to see if there is anything left where we can expand some of that scope a little bit. But for now, we are right on target, we're doing good. The November expenses that were paid out this past month, we had some progress billing from McKinn Street. And then because we've been taking a little bit more time going through and making sure everything is buttoned up nice and tight, we had a little bit of wiggle room, so we purchased a few extras CDs, so we had some placement fees from that. We had an ending balance of $9,828,607.43. So we are doing really good. Our initial report to you was right around $400,000 for CD interest terms, we're up to about $450,000 with the new CDs that were purchased, gave us a pretty good bump. And then we're going to be working with Bayland in the next week or two to kind of fine-tune that payment schedule as we go along. They have not requested a payment yet from us, which is helping us. But I expect that we're going to be making at least a payment in December to them, to get them moving along. So once we have that payment schedule buttoned up, then we can look at, are there additional CDs we can purchase one last time? Try and get some of those locked in rates before it's lowered rates again, so.
Question, when you were saying that we're in good shape, and we'll see, you know, I mean, it's great to hear that we're in good shape.
Yep.
It sounds like you're thinking we might even have a little bit of extra money if supply costs or whatever.
I'm cautiously optimistic.
Right.
I'm not ready to give you a number yet.
No.
But I would say probably by the end of next year, once the major bulk of the projects are done, then we'll, definitely by the end of next year.
At that point, is that when we can look at the possible alternates that are needed?
So the cost estimates include funding all the alternates. So this is all the alternates. There were a couple of projects that were part of the referendum, like the ID system, that we will be doing on our own, that are not in this, but that we are able to cover that with the costs that we have right now, so.
But without reading this, obviously, in full right now, all the alternates are just added amenities? And those are covered in that budget?
I wouldn't call them added amenities. So the initial roofing was just like the bare minimum to seal in the roof. The alternate is to redo the whole roof. All, we shouldn't say the whole, the older parts of it, not the new parts. So that's in here. The vestibule had ballistic window film initially. We are going to go with the actual glass rather than the film, it's better, stronger. So all of that is included in the pricing and our estimates, so.
The only one alternate that is probably listed in here that we are likely not to go with is actually on the first page of the elementary school. And that would be that additional rubberized surface for the second playground piece. That's along the fence there, along the road. We're only going to do the main playground equipment, so.
What's going to be there instead, like mulch or?
Right now, it's just wood chips. And that's for snow removal reasons. After talking with Stephen, Justin, having two rubberized surfaces, that's a lot of weight of snow to put on those, so.
Will there still be accessibility for the other portion, all right?
Correct. You are welcome to keep these drawings, take a look at them, let me know if you have questions as you go over them. There's a lot of information on there, so.
I was going to say, could we get a listing of all the things in Squiggly? But, oh my goodness, there's a lot.
I think it's all defined, right, in the general notes? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Kind of is just keeping track. We have to be physically mindful.
On each page, like what's all in detail, it's listed in the general notes at the bottom, right?
The general notes are more just kind of instructions for, about the scope of work for each page. We don't.
The bottom right-hand corner will give you like an area where within the school it is. So that'll identify.
Yeah, you'd have to read through all the notes.
Right, yeah.
Information, yeah.
Yeah.
And the cloud lines are actually, those were revisions that we made during the process that after we had our walkthrough, some of the bidders had questions, so those are clarifications.
Okay.
So are these things here?
Yeah, if it has like a cloud around it, kind of looks like a cartoon, like speaking bubble.
Yeah, that's it right there, yep.
Those are revisions, so those are things that were revised during bidding.
I'll highlight those.
And then you have like a wand with a triangle next to it.
I just have one more question to notice, and some of these where it says like cameras will be moved and replaced by a monitor. I'm assuming that is incorporated in all, so you're doing, okay. But the cost of that, obviously, there's still a cost over pay, and that's included in all this?
Yeah.
Are these drawings kind of a set thing, or if we notice something in a week or two, we can?
Yeah, if it's within, yeah, I mean, as long as it's within a reasonable timeframe, just because again, when he submits the drawings, the state, there's not going to be, you know, what, simple questions, simple changes. By all means, yeah, we encourage feedback.
Do we want to set like a deadline for that, so we all have a chance, but then not bring it out? I think they should all go through Jesse.
Yes, it should all go through Jesse.
I would need that probably by Wednesday of this week.
Yeah.
All right, nothing else referendum? Thank you, Chris, thank you, Jim, for coming up.
Yes, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Merry, merry Christmas. That's a great gift.
Okay, so we'll run on to our general financial update for this month. Um, this is through the end of November. And right now, I'm still using the target rate of taking the number of months we are within the fiscal year divided by twelve to get that percentage. As I learn things and get a little bit better at this, I'll get that percentage out into more accurate, but we're still looking good. Uh, the revenues we received this past month were, we got our grant reimbursements and aid payments. This was the first round of grant reimbursements we received this year. Um, getting that data entered into WISE grants and approved by DPI was a little bit slow and painful this year. There was quite a bit of changes we had to make. Um, but once they approved it, then we were able to submit that first grant reimbursement and money was turned around pretty quickly. And then, of course, we got our monthly USDA food payment in and our expenditures for this last month. And I just kind of picked out some of the bigger ticket items. We have the Get Kids Ahead grant funds that need to be spent by December thirty-first. And we, in November, we purchased the Character Strong curriculum. It is a mental health-based curriculum for the elementary school. We had soccer uniforms that were purchased and then we also unexpect, unexpectedly had to purchase some boys' basketball uniforms. Our basketball team was a little bit bigger than we were expecting, so it's a good thing, a problem to have. Thankfully, the Booster Club has helped us with that purchase, so a big thank you to the Booster Club. We did purchase the baseball scoreboard and we finished our annual audit and the financial statements were received for both the regular and the charter schools. And for Fund Twenty-Seven, we did have some unexpected costs creep up so far this year. Um, we had a couple extra students that needed some more specialized schooling, so that's gonna, we'll probably have to do a bunch of memory close for the end of the year, once we have those expenses.
I got a que, a couple of questions.
Sure.
To the chair, may I ask?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, the baseball scoreboard.
Yep.
We've purchased it. It's here, correct?
Correct.
Do we have the polls and everything?
Um, I believe Jeff is working with the utility company.
Okay, good.
So he was hoping to get some donations for it.
And are we putting that in or is the city?
So again, it's something he's working with the utility to see if they could have some of their guys volunteer to do it on Saturday morning, I believe.
Okay, just came up, came up in another meeting, so I was just curious as to where we were with that. Um, I, I think it looked nice and I, they've already determined where it's gonna go, so that's awesome. Um, the Fund Twenty-Seven, were we hiring people or was it program or transportation? What is, are we paying for someone to go somewhere else? Where else are they going? It just, I, I don't know where you would send someone else. That's why I'm asking.
There's specialized schools in the Green Bay area, I believe.
One is going to be fundamentals in Green Bay.
Okay, I didn't know that. So, okay, and then we have to pay for the tuition and the transportation?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Little, little costly, but what we have to do.
Absolutely. I was just curious as to. Curious. Okay, those are my questions.
No. So question came about carpooling. Um, we are not carpooling with the other student that is going to an alternative program, a different site. Uh, but we are carpooling with Kiwanis School District. Um, they have a student that goes to the same site. And so they're gonna take, oh.
Morning route.
They're doing the morning route. We're doing the afternoon route. I did, wanted to make sure I didn't mix that, so, yeah.
Any other questions?
Amber's got a couple more here.
So that takes us into our other funds, the referendum debt fund. Uh, payments have all been made as they need to be. Our Forty-Six Fund is the capital improvements that are non-referendum related. We have not had any additional expenses in November. Um, the auxiliary gym floor was finished earlier this year and I think we received the last invoice for that. It was just a couple grand. And then Fund Forty-Nine is the referendum-based projects. McKinstry is moving right along with their energy efficiency products, projects. And we did receive that progress billing from them in November. And like I mentioned earlier, we did additional investment CDs to maximize our interest earnings.
Any other questions for Amber? All right, I'll jump to the school calendar for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. You have a copy in your board packet. Um, so we're looking at a start date of Tuesday, September second, two thousand and twenty-five. That's the Tuesday right after Labor Day. That's the earliest we can start by state statute unless we apply for an exemption. Um, we are looking at adding two professional learning days into the calendar for next year that we have not, um, had in years past. And those dates would be Monday, October twenty-seventh and Friday, February twenty-seventh of twenty-six. Um, talking with, as an admin team, we feel like there's gonna be quite a bit of professional learning that staff are gonna be doing next year, especially at the elementary school with having a new literacy curriculum. So we wanna provide them ample time to be able to dig deep into that resource and be able to understand it so they can give the best instruction possible, so.
Is there a limit on how many days you can do that?
There's not. As long as you meet the requirements of the number of hours of instruction.
Do you think with all the new stuff coming about that two is enough?
Love to have more, but it's gonna push us to go into June then, unfortunately.
Scheduled throughout the year. These are just two.
Oh, there's more? Add on to contracts and costs per salaries or is it the same number of like instructional?
Same number, yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't change contract.
I'm sorry, I missed the answer there. We were chatting. So is it gonna increase?
Contracts? No.
Didn't think so, just making sure.
It's just less student days. It's still a number of contracted days that, uh, teachers would be here. It's just less student days, so.
Still made our student quota for DPI.
Correct, yep. And it actually allows us, I think, two snow days built into this calendar, so. Uh, Thanksgiving break will remain at three days off, so Wednesday through Friday. That was new this year. Um, I heard no feedback on positive or negative on that, so we're gonna keep that as is. Um, winter break is eight days long, starting on Christmas Eve, December twenty-fourth, so we will have school up to, through December twenty-seven, or twenty-third, I'm sorry. Um, but the way that New Year's falls, we would come back just one day, I think it is, on a Friday. So we're gonna just extend that out rather than coming back in one day, so. Um, end of semester is that Monday, January nineteenth, um, right around there. So we always have off at the end of semester for teachers to do grading and then we do professional development in the morning with staff. Spring break is five days a week, or five days. Uh, we did, um, we coincide that with Easter and Good Friday, so.
Easter's at the tail end of that.
Correct, yeah. And then tentative graduation right now is Sunday, May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-six, with the last student day being Friday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-six, so. Um, more to come on that graduation. They want to do some more considerations around that, so right now, that's why it says tentative, so.
Can I add something to that?
Mm-hmm.
Um, you'll also see for elementary, there are two parent teacher conference dates. So based on staff feedback this year, um, we are going to be holding intermediate grade level parent teacher conferences mid-October, so grades three through six. And then we are going to be holding primary grades four K through two on that regular November date. So we're splitting it based on moving to quarters instead of semesters for grades. We just felt that the grades that used Power School, four grading, if they're meeting at the end of the quarter, it makes it a little hard for a student to make any changes or progress from a traditional grade standpoint. Um, so we're gonna split those into two, so that's why you'll see two on there.
Did you do that this year or what was this, what this year?
Yeah, sixth grade held parent teacher conferences early. It's kind of a last minute call. They wanted to test it out and pilot it for us and they thought it was really successful, so. But then for the younger kids, the need was definitely still there to keep that later time, just to get to know the kids and do assessments and things like that.
Any other questions about calendar?
All right.
Uh, one last thing, I just have, just a reminder about the spring election. Um, that, um, anyone that's out in the community that would like to run for school board, um, paperwork is going to be due, um, by January seventh, two thousand and twenty-five at five o'clock and that can be picked up in the district office, so. That is all I have.
Okay. Elementary principals report.
I am very happy to introduce two of our staff members, two of our lit team members. Um, Emily Crager, she is teaching in our transitional classroom this year, so four K and kindergarten. And then Danielle Schultz is our reading specialist this year. Um, we, as a lit team, as you've heard, as you have heard me share month after month now since probably the summer, is that we have embarked on quite an extensive curriculum review process. Um, we've been working with Charla Meyer from CISA Seven, so she has led us through that. Um, and then our lit team members have really done a lot of the heavy lifting through this process as they've been present every single time that we've met. Um, they've done the deep dive into each of the curriculums and then they've really led the work with their respective grade levels and PLCs. Um, so Danielle and Emily are going to share some information with you about the process that we went through and then also share with the next steps that we are hoping to do. So I will turn it over to them.
All right, you let me know when.
Um, so we just have, um, all of our members and what goals we have. Um, so as you can see, we, um, did a really good job of finding somebody from each grade level to be representative, um, all the way from four K to six. And then we have one of our reading interventionists, Shauna, me, and then also Katie, who would get together for these meetings and meet with Charla Meyer from CISA Seven. Um, so as Amy was talking about earlier, there were four curriculums when we started, um, that we were looking at. Yes, they added a fifth one after we were already into our process. Um, so we didn't have a really good chance to look at that one, but we took a deep dive at the four that Amy included, which was EL Education, CKLA, which is also Core Knowledge, Language Arts, uh, Wit and Wisdom, and also Bookworms. Um, so in the summer, we had two professional development days in August. And the first day was our K through six staff, so anybody who was available. And we actually had a really great turnout from a lot of our staff members. And this day was just trying to get everybody kind of familiar with how this process was going to look. So we learned just about, um, science of reading practices. Um, we came together and we made a really rough draft of the core beliefs and vision for our school. Um, and then just spent the rest of the day kind of figuring out how these visions and beliefs fit with us and as our staff and how we wanted to move forward. And then a day afterwards, still in August, um, our literacy team got together again with Charla Meyer to really just refine those beliefs and that's what you have in front of you right now is what we kind of brought together as our school vision and core beliefs. Um, and then that same day, our literacy team actually started to dive into a first curriculum to look at. Um, Charla Meyer was super helpful throughout the whole process, um, for CISA Seven because she showed us how to use Ed Reports, which is like a website that is, it was made by teachers, for teachers, and it really takes a deep dive into every single curriculum and like rates it on different, um, describe those.
Standards.
Yeah, standards, criterias. Um, so you can really compare different curriculums with each other based off of the same criteria. Um, so we started that in August and we kind of just got to jump on everything that we wanted to start. And then in September, when we all came back, we met as a literacy team again to just continue analyzing the different materials and start in on the second curriculum off of the list. Um, and then all this time while we were meeting as a literacy team, we had to really keep in mind like how we were going to continue to involve staff throughout the process because the last thing we needed was for us to make a decision and everyone says, why, why? So we just continued to have like monthly meetings, PLCs, um, where each of us having from our own grade level, we kind of share out to our teams about how we were handling this vetting process and how we were making decisions.
No, just, the really nice thing is they all have like a lot of electronic resources that were free and we were able to share those and look at a lot of the electronics side of things, about actually having the materials in hand so that our PLC members could also get a glimpse of it because they couldn't invest the time that we had the option of investing.
Okay, and then in October, um, we continued our vetting process through the different curriculums. Um, we, at this point, we had gotten through all four of them and we were starting to look at inviting different curriculums to different vendor presentations. So what that would include is just like an hour of time where they're basically telling us why their program is the best fit for us.
And we created like a big list of questions as you were going, so it was their opportunity to answer like, you don't have a four K program. What do you do? You, what does this look like for special ed? So things like that.
So we were able to take in those kind of questions and automatically up to that, we, we already eliminated Bookworms at that point in time. Um, it did not have a very good fit for our school. It was more of an online resource. Um, it didn't have four K. It didn't go past fifth grade, so it kind of left out our youngest and oldest groups. And then the way that the lessons were set up, um, was just not really, like, we broke it into like different sections and the way that our time schedule worked, it really went to fit with our grade level schedules. So right off the bat, we, it just didn't fit with what we needed. So we had decided to invite the EL Education, CKLA, and Wit and Wisdom to these presentations. So then in November, um, with narrowing it down to three, we gave our PLC groups time, um, with each other, whole group, um, grade level size to kind of go through and have access to these online resources. And we were also able to get hard copy materials sent from the curriculum, um, curriculum groups as well. So, um, at parent teacher conferences, we actually had all three of those resources out and displayed for parents, um, to view as they came through. I wouldn't say like tons of people stopped, but they were there if people wanted to see them, um, but, yeah. Um, so then this rolls us into December. So December fifth, early December, we had those vendor presentations where we listened to all three of the curriculums that we were left with. Um, during the time, we were able to first listen to them, but then we were also given time with Charla from CISA to kind of ask our questions and also debrief and kind of share our current thoughts at that time. And while all of this was still going on and we were thinking about which curriculum was best suited for us, we were actually able to get in contact with Reedsville. Um, and so December ninth, Reedsville invited us over for a site visit to watch CKLA. Um, they adopted CKLA in the fall of twenty twenty-three. Um, so they were relatively new with it as well, so it was nice to kind of get a fresh perspective on how they handled the transition with the new curriculum as well. But we, as a team, were very impressed with like how effective and how aligned it was with what our vision and core beliefs were that we created. Um, we saw obviously a lot of high levels of independence, engagement. Um, these curriculums are all of high ragers, so it's, it was just very interesting to see like moving from a mini lesson type of structure that we have now to a very content-heavy teaching in front of a class for an hour. Like, it's just a very different structure that all these curriculums are using, so it was just very interesting to watch these kids be engaged the entire time, whether it's small group work, whole group, um, polling, but very, I mean, high expectations, it's high student outcome.
And I felt like it was helpful because their school district is very similar makeup to Algo Ma, size-wise and diversity, things like that. So it was really nice to see like our district within theirs and it's successful. Size classes even were pretty smaller.
Yeah. Um, so we were able to take our knowledge from the, um, vendor presentations and then our site visit. And then on December twelfth, we met as a whole staff. And in the back of our minds, we kind of were thinking all the same thing about which curriculum, curriculum we were leaning towards. But I think our site visit to Reedsville really pushed us over to the CKLA side of things. Um, so we did, um, give a little brief, um, fill-in to our staff about what we learned, our takeaways. And then we proposed to them the idea of adopting CKLA for our own use. Um, so in that same time that we met, uh, we did give the staff another kind of chance to take a. to take a deeper dive into that specific curriculum because we didn't want to say, this is what we're using, good luck. So we really wanted them to just take one more, to like look at these resources and like really think what, or how they could see themselves using it or like questions they still had as to why this wouldn't be something that we would want to adopt. So the next slide.
And we all have a grade level, unit, theme in-hand copy, like two pilot this spring. So it was nice to have like resources that they could look through, page through. So every grade level has one currently.
Yeah, and so we were able to actually keep all the staff in the same room for that section. So people were able to ask the Lit team questions, ask Katie questions, kind of how things would go. So at the end, what we asked teachers to do before they left was just give us some type of feedback, like what they're thinking about CKLA. And we asked 4K to six general ed teachers and also special education teachers to take this survey. So one of the questions we asked them was to rate their level of support for the CKLA curriculum for the next year. So as you can see, one, two, and three is not filled in, but we have very strong, eighty-six point four percent for having full support of adopting the CKLA curriculum.
And that was everyone in the room, you forced them to give you an answer, or is there like three people?
No, it was, it was at least, I think we had twenty-three total responses. So that's all the grade level teachers with the special education teachers. And then we asked them to rate how closely they thought CKLA aligned with the needs of their students. So we had more in the fifty percent range. But also, at the same time, I think as people start to dive into it a little bit more, we can actually start to see how it aligns instead of just saying, this is our unit, like this is how it would go. So I mean relatively, everyone was more on the same page with adopting, but we can align the needs as we see fit as when we start a curriculum. And then how they felt that the curriculum aligns with our core beliefs and vision that we made as a staff. And so again, that core belief and vision was made by everybody and everybody got a chance to look at our CKLA materials. And so we were again very close to aligning exactly and almost aligning to our beliefs and vision. And then their level of confidence that the literacy team underwent in order to arrive at this decision. This one wasn't very surprising to us because the whole time, because we've made such an effort to involve the entire staff in our proposal and ideas and thoughts, we weren't.
They weren't surprised?
Yeah, they always, they kept saying they had their full support and trust in us, so which was really nice to hear. So, and then we also had a little section for them besides rating as to just kind of show us their thoughts. So they do still have some questions, which obviously can be answered down the road, but like what does homework look like at upper levels? When can we pilot seeing more example materials? Flexibility in 4K, professional development? How are we working with struggling students slash intervention times? So all things that could be asked with any curriculum, but it's just getting us to take a bit of a deeper dive and get that professional development that we need in order to answer all of these questions. And then last but not least, all the things that they're excited about when it comes to getting a new curriculum, having the resources made, built-in morphology, engaging topics, everything in one program, finally having a 4K option, consistent, structured, explicit instruction. Really just kind of a fresh start with everything because you just have a lot of things we're piecing together right now. And I think everyone's very excited to just start something fresh. So what we're kind of proposing to you guys is that in January, we're looking for score, school board approval of CKLA from pre-K to fifth grade. And then the accompanying program for sixth grade is Amplify ELA. So we also want, in the next couple months, this January, we want to schedule more site visits with different districts. And we also know that Keel utilizes CKLA as well. So between Keel and Reedsville, really getting our staff besides the literacy team out to see what CKLA is like in action. And then we're also meeting with Sharla from CISA VII, at least one more time, to kind of discuss our final consensus and get her thoughts on what our next steps could be for instructional materials or pilots or professional development. Thank you.
I think those sites, they help a lot with understanding the questions that were asked. Like the one where it was a little lower with understanding the students' needs, like seeing it in action is so much easier than reading it and kind of piecing it in your head. So that will be, I think, really beneficial to the student, to the teachers.
Yeah, it's great that you're going to get some other staff other than just the two of you out there, the ones that will be actually dealing with it.
Depressive process, guys.
Do you think it flows well with like where our first graders are at right now in whatever's been given to them to go to second grade on this new one? Is it, or do we have to do part of first grade curriculum in second grade to get everybody back up on that level?
I think that the, what is expected in CKLA is a lot higher than what we've been currently teaching. But I also know that with CKLA, the way that, the way that it's different than our current curriculum is that in our current one, we teach a skill and we move on. With CKLA, everything like comes back around. So yes, if like, let's say we implement, the first year is going to be very tough and it's probably going to be more than these kids are used to. But we're giving them that exposure when it comes to the knowledge topics and the phonics topics. And at least if they're exposed, yes, we're not focusing on one hundred percent mastery right now. But if they're exposed to it, we know that it's going to continue grade after grade to come around and get these kids to where they need to be.
It's interesting when you look at the like longevity of the program because it's big themes of each grade level. It's like kindergarten will repeat again in second grade and will repeat again in fourth grade, but each one's just like a little deeper on that same topic. And then same with first, third, and fifth. So you can see it come back around through all the grade levels.
So the scaffolding is there.
Mm-hmm.
I've got a couple of questions.
All right. So is the whole staff teaching this?
Or is it just your reading and English teachers?
Well, it depends. We have some grades that are departmentalized currently. So like third, fourth, third grade, fourth grade, and then fifth, actually our older grades. Our older grades are all departmentalized. So they would just have, if they choose to, they would just have like the reading teacher slash writing teacher take this CKLA curriculum. In our younger grades, we have, we don't have any departmentalization.
Right.
So I would think it's more up to them, like more up to them on whether or not they decide to continue teaching both the math and the ELA or if they would decide as a department to split it up and switch their kids. I feel like it's their teaching style and their teaching choice on whether or not they decide.
Because you, one of them said, how much is this going to take out of my teaching time? So I didn't know if this was like a whole school initiative or if it's just certain.
Oh, it's whole school, but I think it's just depending on what you teach in the upper grades.
Yeah, yeah.
Typically now, what do we, what's our literacy block, like forty? I mean, it's, so it's like a two-hour teaching window for this new program. And which is daunting when you think of your school day and then you've got math. So there's some teachers that were apprehensive about that two-hour block. But we saw it in Reedsville and I mean, the kids sat, they sat, they were involved, they, it was pretty seamless. Which also answered a lot of our questions of like, is this the right program for us? And it went really well.
I was Lit coach for two years and what you guys did was amazing. You engaged everyone and Katie, excellent job you guys did. I am totally impressed in how you're getting the buy-in and everything. So kudos to you and kudos to, it was amazing. If I tried to do this, oh my goodness, we were just resistant, resistant, resistant. How are you going to measure success? What are the, what are the, how are we going to know we're successful with this?
I mean, on paper, every theme has, every lesson has like the assessments, but it depends if you're looking through aims because it would be aligned with our Act 20, which is assessments.
Right, and I feel like it's going to be, because it's such a shift in how we've done things in the past, I feel like it's going to kind of be breaking it down and starting it from zero. Like here's where our kids are at last year because it's very hard to compare, especially now using aims web.
Correct.
Compared to where we were with Fastbridge. Even that is difficult looking from third grade to fourth grade because we don't have aims web in fourth. So I think just breaking it down and saying like, here's where our kids are right now at this point in time, like it's going to be something that we're going to have to revisit semester after semester, year after year, just to see where our growth is happening. Because right now with our current curriculum, I mean, we're making gains in different areas, but are we seeing the follow-through from grade level to grade level? No, but that's where we're kind of hoping where our CKLA can kind of go back and continue to tunnel through each grade level and using our aims web data hopefully as a whole school, once we're all on the same platform. And then utilizing the different systems that CKLA can offer. They have different additional supplements and intervention tracking systems that we can use along with the same kind of like formative assessments or like exit tickets. So I feel like there's just a lot more, in my opinion, a lot more things that we can utilize in the CKLA curriculum to track student progress than what we currently have right now.
Because I hate it, but you know we want to see how the program, how the curriculum is going to impact the test scores. God, that just drove me crazy, even seeing it. But I mean, that's what the public is going to look at and now we're going to see that growth. So anyway, you can be creative with that to get it out to us so we can say, yes, we're making, and you know, we can't expect growth in the fir, I mean, we'll get growth the first year, but then we may stagnate. And then we got to keep saying it's going to be a five-year program. You don't expect change right away, it's going to take a little pieces of time. Last question, is there a writing component?
Yes, so this one, so all the ones on the list of the approved ones, they actually combine all of reading, writing, and phonics. So, so right now, we currently use like units of study for reading, units of study for writing, and then foundations for our phonics.
Got you.
And phonemic awareness. So this, this program CKLA encompasses all of that.
Okay.
So in our younger grades, as Emily was talking about, they have like an hour block of skills, which is your phonemic awareness, your phonics.
Dip thongs.
Yeah, and then they have a hour block of knowledge. And that's where your speaking, listening, comprehension, writing comes in. So they do a good job of balancing all of it. But again, that's what our staff was very excited about, was that everything's in one. So we don't have to continuously piece together different components from different curriculums.
I'm excited, and again, very, very, you guys did a great job presenting it to us and good luck and.
It's wonderful.
And so do 4K, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Having a transition.
And the scaffolding, unless you're coming back.
That's built from the pick these years.
And I'll just add too that, I mean, you can just tell by listening to Danielle and Emily, they know their stuff. The Lit team has been amazing. You know, I attribute the eighty-five percent staff support, full support for this curriculum to the work that they've done and how they've been able to communicate within their grade levels and within their PLCs. Like I said, they're doing the heavy lifting on all of this. So they've really taken the time to get to know the ins and outs before proposing this to the staff. So it's, this has been the most comprehensive and positive curriculum review process that I have ever been part of as well. So it's just been really great to be able to work with staff and have staff leaders take charge and just take the initiative to really push for something new. So, wonderful.
Yeah, I don't have a question, I just want to mirror, great job, excellent presentation, it was great. I think you're also helping build some culture with your staff as well. I mean, you take off the curriculum, but just building that camaraderie with your staff is excellent. So thank you for that.
Sounds like an A and B device.
Thanks for coming here, you're being awesome.
Moving on.
All right, I was asked to approach the staff with a couple of proposed changes, or changes that we were considering. One was to the amount of credits required for graduation. Increase, a suggested increase of two credits. Reason for that is it would put us more in the ballpark with area schools. And also our thought is that there's definitely room in our student schedules for those increased credits. So what we were specifically looking at wasn't whether or not it was supported by the staff, I don't know if it was supported by the staff. The question was, if we move forward with an additional two credits, in which departments or how would we require those credits to be earned? And the overwhelming support was to add those credits to STEAM or CTE. So your, your quiet sciences basically, or your shop, sort of those areas. The similar reason they gave is students that are really focused on say, a post-secondary education, they're already going to take more core classes than are needed, so there's, there was no need to push those. The foreign language requirement, they looked at that. And the concern there was, we might be putting kids into classes where they really don't want to be and that could deteriorate the foreign language experience for those who do want to be there. And then also it would, forcing students to take more would possibly increase behavior issues, which we don't want. And then, yeah, some of the other thoughts that they brought up was, do we need to add some keyboarding and computer knowledge? Do we have career planning requirement? So there's some things that we'll, we'll continue to look at on our end. But definitely, two additional credits in the STEAM slash CTE area was an overwhelming recommendation from the staff. Volunteer hours was not as well supported by the staff. The, the main concern, well, let me just say, I was presented as this. First of all, it's something that we understand the community is looking for, okay? Volunteer groups, community organizations are looking more like me and less like them. So we're trying to get younger participants in our community organizations, understand that. Also, we continue to try to look for ways to connect our school to our community, right? Like that's really important for me, it's important for our school is to try to build out those connections between, between the community and the school. So that's how it was presented to them. And then the final point of possibly requiring volunteer hours is we know that learning is also done through experience or experiential learning is really important to our kids' learning. So those, those points were put forward to the staff. There's some of the resistance came back and just again, the idea of, okay, we're forcing volunteerism. That's kind of an oxymoron, right? There was consensus that ten hours felt like a lot, especially when we consider who our students are and how much they're involved with already. So the ten hours per year or the forty-hour total was thought to be a little bit high. Fear of students that are forced to go represent the school maybe aren't going to represent us well. Transportation, how do we deal with transportation and make that, that opportunity equitable for especially our younger students? What happens if students transfer in? Are we prorating the hours? What happens, how are we going to hold students accountable? How, what happens if they do more than forty hours a year? Can they get, or ten hours a year, can they, can they stockpile those for one year? So there was just a lot, there were questions, I think some of those questions can be, can be overcome, right? Some of those discussions can be had and we can come to consensus. They did present an alternative, rather than having a requirement for volunteers' hours. The question was, can we offer it as a half-credit course and have that facilitated by a teacher? So that was the staff's feedback on that. That's all I have.
When are you looking to have this become reality?
Which part, there's two parts there.
Yeah, well, I guess either one, I mean, in terms of the credits.
Yeah, the two credits, as soon as, as soon as we're ready to move forward, I think the staff's ready to rock on that. So it would obviously not start in.
This year.
Next semester, but then the following year, that would be, I think, an included requirement. There was thought about, well, do we phase it in? Quite honestly, again, there's room in, in the student schedule. It's not, it's not a matter of, oh, the seniors don't have room, there's room. And then the volunteer hours, again, there's no consensus yet on that. So I think there's more work to do. If we're going to do that, we need some, some more information.
Does National Honor Society require volunteering?
National Honor Society requires volunteering, absolutely.
Anything, any other clubs?
There are other, so there's opportunities to volunteer in a lot of different ways that exist, it's just not mandatory. So for example, we look at Brenda Parlow's classes. You just heard about the Purit initiative today, you heard about the canned collection. You hear about student, student council. Our, our students are very active. I think the question, in my opinion, not that you asked for it, but I think my opinion is, how do we create more connection with those existing community organizations with our students? Now, does that mean, do we open student chapters here at school? Do we, I mean, how do we partner with, you know, how to get the Example Lions Club? Or, you know, we've got an FFA alumni, I think FFA will, as it starts, will graduate into that. But there are those other organizations where we don't have a student chapter. So how do we? So how do we feed those adult chapters with our students? I think that's a different maybe conversation or take on that conversation.
Is there a Rotary group on the?
I don't know that there is a Rotary group.
Do you want in?
I know there's an interact program through Rotary and involves six students. Is it possible to have a choice, like between the science classes and or, or volunteer or mix it?
Yes, I question you.
So if you're required, you're going to have two more credits, so you said that the choices were.
Or could we add that in as one of the choices?
Yeah.
Anything possible at this point?
Mr. Robertson's going to work with the staff a little bit more in January in this. Um, they have standing meetings that the whole staff meets, um, and then we will bring together a proposal for January for being for increasing or changing our policy basically and graduation requirements.
Have you asked the students?
Have not gotten student input so far, though the conversation just started with the staff to see where the staff was at. But yeah, I think student input of course would be an angle since we're talking about their lives.
Probably tell you what they're going to say.
Some, some are go-getters, some are going to say more, some will.
I think it all depends on the added credits that they need. If the added credits are in, you know, something that.
They want.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, as far as added credits, well, no, we're not going to ask. I mean, that's just.
Well, I get that.
Yeah, we, I mean, we have the data on that, it's not, it's got no reiterability, honestly.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we will keep moving. Katie, Pathfinder, ABA and pack a puppy report.
Um, for Pathfinder, the kids are really focusing on elective credits, um, last month. They're finishing up a lot of their first semester packets early, so, um, they don't have a ton of resources for elective credits. So, um, Lexi does a lot of art things with them, or different art therapy type things, since they've been doing a lot this month. Um, for ABA, I just have a couple of dates to throw out. Um, project showcase is January fifteenth from four to six, um, in the ABA space. And then we'll be doing our pickleball tournament on February eighth at eight thirty. Um, we're doing it with the Oklahoma Area Education Foundation this year. And, um, hopefully they get a ton of teams. We have a couple of different spaces picked out, um, not only at the high school, if we get a ton of teams. So, um, we'll go, be on the lookout for more information and sign up for that.
Start with the date again?
February eighth, it's a Saturday. From eight thirty until question mark. And then when we were talking about volunteering, it just brought up, um, Friday, our, we have a large group of students every year. They go, um, to St. Devay, help the Toys for Tots, uh, toy jar, they help organize things into different categories and age groups. Um, and then they did some time at the Sunshine House on Friday and our kids came back asking to go visit the Sunshine House often. So, and it really, yeah, they had a really awesome time and like, why don't we do this more often? Why don't we go along with you there? I'm like, oh, by all means, don't be so, you know, so. Um, but volunteer isn't a big part of ABA, it's not like a requirement, but a lot of our descriptions are, um, volunteer hours for kids.
All right, um, are you giving Marie your call?
Yeah, I can do that. Um, she had a emergency come up last minute, so she was not able to make tonight. Um, so the big thing was some professional development that she's been doing with her specialized staff. Um, they went and toured or shadowed some staff over in Howard Swamaco School District today. Um, they brought a couple of our special education teachers from middle school and high school here to kind of witness what co-teaching looks like. Um, co-teaching is where you've got a regular ed or general ed, um, teacher alongside a special education teacher and the mixture of the student population is generalized special ed and they team teach, they teach together basically. So, um, it's a very unique teaching style that is, can go one of two ways sometimes. Um, and so Howard Swamaco's been doing this for a while and, uh, Marie thought it would be a great idea to take some staff over there to just kind of get some ideas, so. That's all I have.
All right, I don't have any other items for discussion. Hey, we can break into action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll move.
Second, motion made by Lani, second by Chrissy, on favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that were presented to us.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Chrissy, second by Jeremy, on favor.
Aye.
Pos, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Algoa School District calendar.
I'll move approval.
All right, motion made by Amy. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Lani, on favor.
Aye.
Pos, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the school resource officer contract.
So moved.
Motion made by Chrissy, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Amy, on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Pos, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Rural Virtual Academy Long-Term Commitment Contract for the twenty-five to twenty-third school years.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Jeremy, second by Chrissy. Questions or comments on that? During none, all in favor.
Aye.
Pos, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the authorization of the superintendent to enter into agreement with Baylen Billings to move forward with referendum construction proposals as presented.
So moved.
Motion made by Amy.
Second.
Second by Jeremy, all in favor.
Aye.
Pos, motion carries. Any requests for future agenda items? During none, I need a motion to go into executive session under Resonance Statute nineteen point eighty-five, subsections one and C for the purpose of personal matters, hiring, staffing, resignations, and the administrative evaluation.
So moved.
Motion made by Chrissy.
Second.
Second by Lani, all in favor.
Yes.
Lani, Amy.
Yes.
Jeremy.